Five. Copies of the agenda are also posted on the city's website and Lyndon TV for the public. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a prayer and flag salute? God of the universe, look thou with favor upon these here assembled, and bestow thy guidance upon the members of the governing body in their deliberations; this we ask in thy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the event of an emergency, the proper method of exiting the council chambers is through the three doors in the rear of the room. Occupants should proceed down the staircase, out the front door, and move away from the area of the front steps. Any member of the public wishing to speak during the public comment session at the end of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets provided in the front of the room with your name and address. If you wish to speak on the 2025 municipal budget, please sign in on the green sheets, again, that's the green sheets, at the front of the room. If you wish to speak on the 2025 SID budget, please sign in on the blue sheets in the front of the room. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate. If you must take a call, please leave the chambers to do so. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ormond.
Here.
Javik.
President.
Caldwell.
President.
Mohammed.
Here.
Rivas.
President.
Delgado.
Excused.
Strano.
Here.
Armstead.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hudek.
Here.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Here. Okay, can we have approval of the public session minutes of May 15th?
Council President.
Of April 15th, 2025, and April 18th, 2025.
Council President, due to the absence of our sixth ward councilperson, I'll move for the approval of those minutes and request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudek.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we have a few presentations this evening. We're going to start, I'm going to ask Mayor Armstead to go down to the podium. Okay, we're going to start with our lupus awareness month, and I'm going to ask Councilman Rivas to please come down for this one also. Oh, nevermind. For the lupus presentation, Councilwoman Ormond is going to join us.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to read this resolution declaring the month of May as lupus awareness month in the City of Lyndon. A lot of you don't know, but lupus is a silent disease. A lot of people are suffering from it, and you never really know. So I'd like to read, whereas lupus is an unpredictable and misunderstood autoimmune disease that can cause serious damage to the tissue and organs in the body, and in some cases, death, and whereas more than 5 million people worldwide suffer the devastating effects of this cruel and mysterious disease, and each year over 100,000 young women, men, and children around the world are newly diagnosed with lupus, the great majority of whom are women of childbearing age. And whereas lupus medical research efforts into lupus and discovery of safer, more effective treatments for lupus, patients are underfunded in comparison with diseases of comparable magnitude and severity. And whereas many physicians worldwide are unaware of symptoms and health effects of lupus, causing people with lupus to suffer for many years before they obtain a correct diagnosis and medical treatment. And whereas there's a deep unmet need worldwide to educate and support individuals and families affected by lupus, and whereas there is an urgent need to increase awareness in communities across the U.S. and the globe of the debilitating impacts of lupus. Now therefore be it resolved that the month of May is hereby designated as Lupus Awareness Month, with the City of Lyndon, New Jersey lupus community comes together to call for awareness in the disease and its devastating effects, public and private sector funding for medical research on lupus, targeted education programs for health professionals, patients, and the public, and recognition of lupus as a significant public health issue, passed on May 20th, 2025. Mayor Derek Armstead, Council President Michelle Yamakaitis, signed by our city clerk, Joseph Bodek. I would like to ask Charlotte Diakate to please come up and receive this award on behalf of herself and other members of the community who are suffering from this horrible disease.
Yes, you did.
Yep, you did.
Hi.
And you are?
Hi, Lyndon.
How are you?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening. It is a good evening, isn't it? So, oh, I can project. Thank you so very much. So, Mayor Armstead, Madam Council President, and Madam Councilmember, and distinguished members of the council, my name is Charlotte Diakate, and I'm a first ward resident, a longtime New Jersey resident as well, and joining me is a lupus warrior coming from the town next door in Roselle. So with that, on behalf of the Lupus Foundation of America, New Jersey, the City of Lyndon's lupus community, I and we accept this proclamation with a joy and a hope beyond measure. For an estimated 1.5 million Americans, yes, lupus is one of the cruelest, mysterious, unpredictable, and misunderstood autoimmune disease. It is so difficult to diagnose, difficult to live with, and a challenge to treat, and definitely can be fatal. But in this disease of life, while it affects 90% of women, and during 80% of who during childbearing years, it also disproportionately affects women of color, and lupus definitely takes a significant toll and burden on daily life, which can be devastating. It may not look, we call that the look-good, feel-bad disease, but there is a determination in our lives. We, here are some works that are happening right here in Lyndon. We have our New Jersey Support Group, in which we have over 100-plus warriors who come together for support and caregivers where we can connect. And through our local library, we have literature that you can retrieve so that you can become more aware. And then, in October 5th, we have our Walk to End Lupus now in New Jersey, right in Norma Hagan Park in Cranford, New Jersey, so we hope to see all of you there, walking with us. For the past two years, we've raised over $100,000 towards research. That's so important. I just came from Washington, D.C. on Capitol Hill, where we look to turn the Capitol purple, and we had an opportunity to meet legislators from our districts, and we had one, three particular asks, and in this ask, we are seeking to make sure that Medicaid is protected, because lupus is expensive. And we also look to preserve the millions of dollars for research, because as I said, that there is no cure yet. So we're also looking to reduce time of diagnosis. It took me almost six years to be fully diagnosed, after years of everything else but. We want to ensure that persons with lupus have an arsenal of safe and effective treatments, and that we have expanded direct services and treatments that are available to us. So as I close, my own journey with lupus, systemic lupus, SLE, yes, it has many challenges, so many highs and lows, but living with lupus brings purpose to my commitment to persevere. In other words, they say I have lupus, but lupus does not have me or us. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call Councilman Rivas now for the ALS Awareness Month.
So, this is also ALS Awareness Month as well, and for many of you, that would be Lou Gehrig's disease. Lou Gehrig was a famous baseball player, and he was struck with the disease. So, whereas ALS, also commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with their muscles, slowly reducing a person's ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas thousands of new ALS cases are reported every year, estimates show that every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS, and someone passes away from ALS. And whereas an average patient diagnosed with ALS survive only two to five years from time of diagnosis. And whereas the exact cause of ALS are unknown, and there is no known cure for ALS, and whereas people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. Whereas securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is vital importance to people living with ALS. And whereas clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas ALS is one of the largest philanthropic funders of ALS research globally, and has committed more than $154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and in 18 other countries. And whereas the ALS Association is committed to accelerating the pace of discovery, fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until a cure can be found. And whereas ALS Awareness Month provides an opportunity to increase public awareness of the dire circumstances of people living with ALS, acknowledges the terrible impact of this disease that it has on those individuals and their families, and supports research to eradicate the disease. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Lyndon do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as ALS Awareness Month, and call upon all Americans to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding and standing in solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease. And again, it's signed by myself, Michelle Yamakaitis, and our clerk, Joseph Bodek.
I would ask Ms. Patricia Montoya here to please come in and receive the recognition.
So, Sunday, we celebrated the Haitian, we had a Haitian flag raising ceremony, in honor of the Haitian independence, which occurred in 1804, and Haiti is actually the first free black nation in the Western Hemisphere, and there are many Haitians who live in our city and in the surrounding communities, and we're just glad, they're very hardworking people, and they add value to our community. So, we honor them every year with a program out in the promenade. So I want to thank all of those who basically came out and supported our efforts. Another resolution, we recognize that Lyndon is 100 years old. That's a long time, and what happened was, the City of Lyndon, what happened was, the borough of Lyndon and the City of Lyndon merged, actually 100 years ago, this past weekend, and we had a big celebration out in the promenade. On Saturday, we celebrated with Kids' Park Day. It was a nice celebration. We would have liked to have more people, but we didn't have as many people show up as we would have liked. So, we ask that when we do have events throughout the rest of the year, just keep in mind that we're 100 years old, and we're going to be celebrating all year, our 100th anniversary. And if you must know, my grandfather got here, it'll be 100 years for my family in 2027, so we've been here for almost 100 years. So we came right at the time this town was formed, made a lot of friends, too. So, we have a resolution from the Union County Board of Freeholders, or Board of Commissioners, I'm getting used to that, and we have also a proclamation from the State of New Jersey, and the Senate and General Assembly, which was presented to us by our Senator Nicholas Peace Terry. So, he's our Senate President as well, and we're not going to try, we're not going to try to read all these, okay? But thank you all for the proclamations.
Yes, thank you. All right. Okay, now we're going to have the public hearing on the 2025 municipal budget. Okay, this is the time to conduct a 2025 budget hearing. I'm going to call upon Mrs. Alexis Zach to do our presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and council for allowing me to present the 2025 municipal budget. The municipal budget is $138,709,923.3. The budget can be broken down into operating expenses, salary and wages totaling $57,252,378.32. That consists of our 695 full and part-time employees. We have 543 full-time, 152 part-time, 64 of those being school guards, and the other category is our other expense budget. The other expenses total $81,457,524.41, for a grand total of $138,709,923.32. This chart shows where our funds are allocated. We have nine different categories. The yellow represents our largest category, which is our public safety departments. We have a fully paid police department headed by Chief Dave Hart, who has done an exceptional job in our police department, as well as oversees our dispatch, and he's also our OEM coordinator. We have a fully paid fire department headed by Chief William Haskell, who has done a tremendous job for the City of London and our fire department. Our public safety department's combined total of salary and wages and other expenses is $42,447,903.32, or 30.60% of our total appropriations go towards our public safety departments. Our second largest category is our insurances, which covers our health insurances, our workers' compensation insurances, and our liability insurances. That totals $24,983,600, or roughly 18.01% of our total appropriations goes towards our insurances. Our third category is our general government, which comprises of all, pretty much all the departments in City Hall, from the mayor's office, to the city clerk's office, to my office, to the tax office. General government totals $16,519,409.26, or roughly 11.91% of all appropriations. Our fourth category is our community services and parks and recreation, which consists of the Division of Public Works, engineering, buildings and grounds, municipal garage, transportation and properties, and recreation and parks, for a total of $15,953,750, or roughly 11.50% of our total appropriations. Our fifth category are statutory expenses, at $15,71,266.73, or roughly 10.87% of our total appropriations. Statutory expenses are our pensions, our unemployment insurance, and our social security expenses. Our sixth category is our debt service, at $13,945,000, or roughly 10.05% of our appropriations. We try to always remain our level, our debt. As general obligation bonds drop off, we then issue unfunded bonds for bond issues to fund. We will see later on in the agenda that we will be having a bond sale this June. Our seventh category is our reserve for uncollected taxes, at $3,875,000, or roughly 2.80%. The reason why we have to budget the reserve for uncollected taxes, as a municipality, it's our responsibility to turn over statutorily 100% to the Board of Education for their levy, 100% to the County of Union for their levy, but unfortunately, we never collect 100%. We try as hard as possible to get close to 100%, but we always have to keep in mind to have a reserve. Our eighth category is our library, at $3,288,023.42, or roughly 2.37%. The library number cannot be budgeted below that number, that is the state minimum depicted by a formula. And the last category is our utilities, which covers our 23 facilities, at $2,625,950, or roughly 1.89% of our total appropriation goes towards our utilities. The red category shows our number-one avenue for revenue is local taxation. Our local tax levy for 2025 will be $72,147,634.13, or roughly 52.01% of our revenue is derived by local taxation. There are other sources of revenue that also comprise for our state budget. We have, number two is our state aid, at over $20 million, or roughly 14.52% of all revenue is derived from state aid. Our third category is our special items. This is $10,650,000, or roughly 7.68%. Special items of revenue are negotiated agreements that the mayor and council have made for between franchise fees, direct revenues to us, as well as host community benefits directly to the City of Lyndon as a revenue. Our fourth category is our surplus, at $10,500,000, or 7.57% of our budget. The fifth category is our pilots, that stands for payment in lieu of taxes. The mayor and council have been aggressive with the various redevelopers to realize[1335.12][1335.15]$9,305,945.13, or roughly 6.71% of our revenue is derived from pilots. As a municipality, we have 95% comes directly to us, and under state statute, we have to share 5% with the County of Union. Our sixth category for revenues is our local revenues, at over $4.5 million, or roughly 3.31%. Our local revenues are derived from the city clerk's office, our court. Our seventh category are grants and shared services, at $3,686,409.26, or roughly 2.66% of our revenue. This number can change. Once the budget is adopted, you may see resolutions that are called Chapter 159s that bring additional grant revenue into the city. As that revenue comes in, we then amend the budget to increase for the grant. Our eighth category, as I mentioned earlier, is our library tax, at $3,288,023.42, or roughly 2.37%. Our ninth category, because not everybody pays their taxes on time, is a category called delinquent taxes. They are hit with penalties and fees. That's a $2.6 million revenue, or 1.87% of all total revenue. And our last category is our construction code fees, at $1,800,000, or roughly 1.30%. They're a self-sustaining
The other expenses total eighty-one million, four hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents, for a grand total of one hundred thirty-eight million, seven hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred two dollars and seventy-three cents. This chart shows where our funds are allocated. We have nine different categories. The yellow represents our largest category, which is our public safety departments. We have a fully paid police department headed by Chief Dave Hart, who has done an exceptional job in our police department, as well as oversees our dispatch, and he's also our OEM coordinator. We have a fully paid fire department headed by Chief William Haskell, who has done a tremendous job for the city of London and our fire department. Our public safety department's combined total of salary and wages and other expenses is forty-two million, four hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and thirty-two cents, or thirty point six zero percent of our total appropriations go towards our public safety departments. Our second largest category is our insurances, which covers our health insurances, our workers' compensation insurances, and our liability insurances. That totals twenty-four million, nine hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred dollars, or roughly eighteen point oh one percent of our total appropriations goes towards our insurances. Our third category is our general government, which comprises of all, pretty much all the departments in City Hall, from the mayor's office to the city clerk's office to my office to the tax office. General government totals sixteen million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and twenty-six cents, or roughly eleven point nine one percent of all appropriations. Our fourth category is our community services and parks and recreation, which consists of the Division of Public Works, engineering, buildings and grounds, municipal garage, transportation and properties, and recreation and parks, for a total of fifteen million, nine hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, or roughly eleven point five zero percent of our total appropriations. Our fifth category are statutory expenses at fifteen million, seventy-one thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-three cents, or roughly ten point eight seven percent of our total appropriations. Statutory expenses are our pensions, our unemployment insurance, and our social security expenses. Our sixth category is our debt service at thirteen million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, or roughly ten point oh five percent of our appropriations. We try to always remain our level, our debt. As general obligation bonds drop off, we then issue unfunded bonds for bond issues to fund. We will see later on in the agenda that we will be having a bond sale this June. Our seventh category is our reserve for uncollected taxes at three million, eight hundred seventy-five thousand, or roughly two point eight zero percent. The reason why we have to budget the reserve for uncollected taxes, as a municipality, it's our responsibility to turn over statutorily a hundred percent to the Board of Education for their levy, a hundred percent to the County of Union for their levy. But unfortunately, we never collect a hundred percent. We try as hard as possible to get to close to a hundred percent, but we always have to keep in mind to have a reserve. Our eighth category is our library at three million, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty-two cents, or roughly two point three seven percent. The library number cannot be budgeted below that number. That is the state minimum depicted by a formula. And the last category is our utilities, which covers our twenty-three facilities at two million, six hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, or roughly one point eight nine percent of our total appropriation goes towards our utilities. The red category shows our number one avenue for revenue is local taxation. Our local tax levy for twenty twenty-five will be seventy-two million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents, or roughly fifty-two point oh one percent of our revenue is derived by local taxation. There are other sources of revenue that also comprise for our state budget. We have number two is our state aid at over twenty million dollars, or roughly fourteen point five two percent of all revenue is derived from state aid. Our third category is our special items. This is ten million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or roughly seven point six eight percent. Special items of revenue are negotiated agreements that the mayor and council have made for, between franchise fees, direct revenues to us, as well as host community benefits directly to the city of Linden as a revenue. Our fourth category is our surplus at ten million, five hundred thousand, or seven point five seven percent of our budget. The fifth category is our pilots. That stands for payment in lieu of taxes. The mayor and council have been aggressive with the various redevelopers to realize nine million, three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and thirteen cents, or roughly six point seven one percent of our revenue is derived from pilots. As a municipality, we have ninety-five percent comes directly to us, and under state statute, we have to share five percent with the County of Union. Our sixth category for revenues is our local revenues at over four point five million dollars, or roughly three point three one percent. Our local revenues are derived from the city clerk's office, our court. Our seventh category are grants and shared services at three million, six hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and twenty-six cents, or roughly two point six six percent of our revenue. This number can change. Once the budget is adopted, you may see resolutions that are called Chapter one fifty-nines that bring additional grant revenue into the city. As that revenue comes in, we then amend the budget to increase for the grant. Our eighth category, as I mentioned earlier, is our library tax at three million, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty-two cents, or roughly two point three seven percent. Our ninth category, because not everybody pays their taxes on time, is a category called delinquent taxes. They are hit with penalties and fees. That's a two point six million dollar revenue, or one point eight seven percent of all total revenue. And our last category is our construction code fees at one million, one million eight hundred thousand, or roughly one point three zero percent. There is self-sustaining revenue that comes in, sustains the expenses that are derived from personnel and expenses for the construction code department to operate. This is a list of the various redevelopment projects, and not all of them could fit on the slide. I tried to pick the larger ones. We have a total investment of over one point one billion dollars in total industrial and commercial. Square footage is over four point eight million square feet. And as I mentioned earlier, our total anticipated revenue for twenty twenty-five due to the pilot revenue is nine million, three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Our mayor and council and Alex Lospinosa, the director of LEDC, have worked very hard in obtaining these redevelopment projects so that the city gets ninety-five percent directly, and we have to share five percent, as I mentioned, to the County of Union. This chart in blue is what the Linden City Council has control over. This is the municipal portion of our tax levy for seventy-two million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents, or roughly thirty-five point three seven percent of your tax dollars goes towards providing municipal services. The purples illustrated our library. Again, this is the state mandated minimum of three million, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty-two cents, or roughly one point six one percent goes towards taxes. The red is illustrated showing our school levy at ninety-two million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars, or roughly forty-five point one nine percent of every tax dollar. Our members of the Linden Board of Education have done a tremendous job with maintaining that levy for at least five or six years. Dr. Berghammer, as the board president, has worked very closely with Mayor Armstead, and Superintendent Perkins has worked closely in keeping the taxes as level as possible for the school levy. And I'd like to thank them for their assistance in that matter. And the last category is our County of Union. We have the levy thirty-four million, eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents, or roughly seventeen point oh nine percent of your taxes goes towards operations for the county. The county is run by the County Board of Commissioners, and we want to thank Mr. Bodek, who's one of our Linden's own commissioners. He's instrumental in obtaining grant funding for us. And our open safe base for the County of Union is one million, five hundred and two thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, or roughly point seven four percent. And we see much of that come back to us in grants. Mayor Armstead and his administration has worked very hard in trying to bring fiscal responsibility for the city. In two thousand and eighteen, he had worked hard to eliminate the garbage surcharge, which was a hundred and twenty dollars for a residential home, single family. And since that time, it had been eliminated. During the worldwide pandemic, the mayor and his council were adamant that they did not want to increase taxes during that time period, and tried to reduce taxes wherever possible. So from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three, our mayor and governing body did not increase the municipal portion. It actually would have been a decrease of nearly seven hundred and three dollars and seven cents based on an average assessed home. Unfortunately, in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, we weren't so fortunate to have a decrease. We have to have increases because there are statutory expenses that are beyond our control of mandated increases of over four million dollars, in addition to increases in almost every single department's other expense budget due to inflation. That's affected every department by over two point one million dollars. And we have ten bargaining units for our six hundred and ninety-five employees, full and part-time, that equated to a three point six million dollar increase. So the twenty twenty-five is going to be, unfortunately, an increase that you'll see on an average assessed home of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight sixty-two, of twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents per month, or three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents annually. A tax point is equivalent to two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight forty-eight for twenty twenty-five. The Finance Committee and the department heads and myself had met numerous times from the budget. We start with zero-based budgeting. We ask every department to justify every expense. Their requests had come in thirteen point two million dollars higher, but we were able to cut and eliminate that to try to minimize as much of an increase as we possibly could. Mayor Armstead and the governing body work very hard for the citizens and priority of servicing the citizens of Linden. We have a public works department that's second to none in the state of New Jersey that provide vast services for our residents, headed by Assistant Superintendent Dave Martinez. We, that covers from trees to sewer services to maintaining our waterways, garbage collection, trash collection, street sweeping, recycling collection, and park landscaping. Some of those come with a cost of operation. To dispose of our garbage collection, it's over one point four million dollars. To dispose of our tax trash, trash collection, it's over four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Our street sweeping, sixty thousand dollars, and the recycling's over two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Recreation and Parks is headed by Keith Pressy, our director, who's done a phenomenal job in bringing in a lot of grants for our recreation and revitalization for our parks. We have over forty parks in Linden totaling over a hundred and ten acres. He oversees five recreation centers. We have five summer day camps that have over a hundred and fifty campers. We have five summer playground sites that see over six hundred participants, and we also run three fall playground sites. The Recreation Department, along with the mayor's office and in conjunction with the Special Improvement District, host various free events for our residents. We had the Easter event where the mayor travels around town as the Easter Bunny to kick off some of the events. And as the mayor mentioned, we had a hundred-year celebration this past weekend that Sandy Jackson and Keith Pressy worked very hard on. And as you can see, there's a plethora of events that are upcoming. I definitely ask you to check their website to make sure you can attend these events. They're very well put together. Recreation also runs various youth sponsored programs from sports to STEM classes to arts and crafts. They have special needs camps that they also hold. We have the adult-sponsored activities that are not only from fitness classes, they have open gym, but we also have financial literacy classes. And our senior citizens have a multitude of clubs and dances and classes, and we always honor our annual outstanding senior citizen of the year. The second component of your budget is your capital improvement plan. In Linden, we ask every department to prepare a six-year capital budget, and it has to have a life expectancy of five years or more and a value of twenty thousand dollars or more. In twenty twenty-five, our public safety departments will receive nearly two point nine million dollars in equipment and related upgrades that they need to operate their departments. The Fire Police Department and Office of Emergency Management are our public safety departments that will see almost, like I said, nearly three million dollars worth of improvements. The non-public safety departments, our Engineering Department headed by Joe Crowback, addresses our aging infrastructure. Mr. Crowback does a tremendous job when it comes to applying for and receiving grants. He's gotten over one point five million dollars in state aid that works on street resurfacing, and the city matches it through capital funding of over one point five million dollars to address our street and resurfacing. In addition, we address our curb and sidewalk reconstruction, our storm and sanitary sewer improvements, and he's also been overseeing the City Hall parking garage rehabilitation. So our engineering for capital projects will be over three point one million dollars in addition to the one point five million of grants that Mr. Crowback was able to obtain. Other non-public safety departments is our Transportation and Properties and Public Works Department headed by Nick Pantina. They work very hard on addressing various infrastructure improvements that need to be done. The total for transportation and properties and public works will be four million dollars in the capital budget. We have information technology that we have, we are fortunate enough to have Teleapp as our vendor. They work very hard for the city, and they're working right now presently on a network engineering project that will finally take non-public safety computers and separate it from public safety computer networking. And I would like to thank Josh for all his work and help in the city departments. And our final department, non-public safety, is our Recreation, Parks and Recreation. Again, Keith Pressy has done a tremendous job for our city and all of the employees under Recreation. We also want to thank State Senator Skatari for obtaining a two point one million dollar grant for Linden. That's to do the Alkalatur Field. And we also want to thank, again, Commissioner Bodek for obtaining grants for the Union County, from Union County, for our Kids' Trust Program. This year, it's going to be dedicated to the Memorial Park. So the total parks is over three million dollars, parks improvement that you will see in our capital budget. And finally, I would like to thank you, the taxpayers, who pay our, pay the taxes. And as you can see, our tax collection rate is steadily on the rise. And I want to thank my tax collector, Stacy Karen, who does a tremendous job in, and her staff, in making sure that everything runs smoothly for the city of Linden. She realizes over two hundred million dollars in collections a year and does a tremendous job. And I'd like to thank my staff for all their hard work on the budget throughout the year, and especially Dan Soboluski and Isabella Gonzalez on their efforts with this PowerPoint presentation. I hope I answered a lot of your questions, but I'll be glad to answer anything that I haven't covered in the PowerPoint. And once again, thank you all for your time and attention this evening.
Okay. The twenty twenty-five municipal budget was placed on the city's website after its introduction last month. Could we have a motion to open a public hearing on the budget?
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on the budget and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay. Pat Hero. You please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Pat Hero, one hundred West Elizabeth Avenue. Once again, Mrs. Zach has done a tremendous job, as always, doing the presentation on the budget. But I do have just a few questions. She did say something about inflation. But it does seem to me that there are a lot of, like, for example, the mayor's office has gone up thirty, let me see, thirty thousand dollars. The city clerk's office approximately forty thousand. Engineering from seven hundred sixty-seven thousand to four hundred to nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred. How do you explain that increase? And is inflation part of that, or are they hiring new people?
Council President?
Yes.
May I answer that?
Okay.
The mayor's office had a position that had been part-time that went full-time, so that's part of that increase. The city clerk's office, the other expense budget, we had an increase because of the Oprah, the multitude of Oprah requests. We had to increase professional services. We also, in each of those, salary and wages are included for the increases that were contractually obligated. So that also contributed to some of those increases as well. And in engineering, we have a lot of redevelopment projects, so we needed to add additional funding for professional services. Engineering has been down full-time positions, I want to say at least three. So unfortunately, professional services had to go up because we've been trying to find qualified engineers, but I think it's been posted four or five times, but we haven't been able to find anyone. So unfortunately, the other expenses had to go up as well for that.
Okay. One thing I noticed, there seems to be a large number of full-time positions. Has anyone thought about maybe, I know the library has done that, reducing a lot of full-time positions to part-time positions? Has anybody considered that in the City Hall?
Council President, may I answer?
Yes.
We have worked closely with each department head, and before we fill the position, we analyze it, our Personnel Division, our Personnel Committee, along with the Finance Committee, and we decide whether we need to replace that position or not. A lot of the departments through the years have been downsized, and unfortunately, sometimes you just can't fill that position just with a part-time body. But we do analyze every position when they come available, the mayor and the Personnel Committee and myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hero.
Council President, may I add something to that?
Yes.
Ms. Hero, for ten years, although we were budgeted to have a business administrator in my office, in the interest of trying to save the taxpayers' money, I went for ten years without a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that's budgeted for a business administrator, handling that aspect of the function of this government myself. So you may see some increases, and they're justified now because we do have a business administrator now, and it's necessary to have smooth and efficient government.
Okay, can we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Council President, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. At this time, we're going to have the public hearing on the twenty twenty-five Sid budget. I'd like to call upon Mr. Felipe Capezza to do a presentation on the budget. Okay, the blue sheets were the ones to speak on the Sid budget. Anybody? Go ahead, Mr. Capezza.
Good evening, everyone. I'm mayor, city councils, and distinguished Linden residents. The Sid budget for the year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six is as follows. Salary and wages is ninety-four thousand. Purchases of services, insurance, professional services, is total of thirteen thousand. Marketing supplies, total of fourteen thousand. Lees, leases on the four, four-three Northwood Avenue, lease on the machines and utilities is thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. And we have special projects like the Latin Festival, which is about ten thousand dollars. Street Lightning Services Stores, eight thousand dollars. We have Eric Clark, who does the house music, seven thousand dollars. Bob Summer, which is the comedy night, has a budget of four thousand dollars. And signage for Sid District is thirteen, thirteen hundred forty-seven dollars. Gives a total of thirty thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars to bring equals to a hundred and eighty-four thousand, a hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's our budget for the year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, July first to June thirtieth. Are there any questions? Council Presidents, anyone, public?
Okay.
No, I would like to announce that I'm working with the restaurant owners, trying to stay open later than what they're doing right now, because we need, we need, we need traffic in the, in the streets, okay? As you know, it is, though, most of the stores, around seven o'clock, everything is dead in Linden, okay? I spoke to, had a meeting two weeks ago with some of these business owners, and they agreed to stay open later, especially in the summer day. We try to stay open between nine and ten o'clock at night, so hopefully that will bring some traffic, and that will pull the rest of the businesses to stay open also later. So to start on that, at the same time, I'm working with the city clerk and the Construction Department to issue permits for outdoor dining, so we could accelerate or expedite the approval of this permit. So you're going to be able to see some tables and some canopies and chairs, so you could see when you drive by, say, oh, look, there was a restaurant right there. I didn't know that was a restaurant. So that goes all the way from St. George Avenue up to, what's that, by the Fire Department? No, the other.
No.
Mansell Street, okay? So anyway, this June sixth, which is a Friday, we're going to have our first outdoor dining. I have some flyers. I would like you guys to stop by. It's called Outdoor Dining Day. Enjoy fresh air dining on East Blanket Street. We're going to close Blanket Street for that one particular day. We're going to put in a tent in the center so people can eat there, and we have our restaurant owners on the side. Hopefully, we'll have some music, slow music, so you can enjoy what you're eating. And we're going to stay open until nine-thirty, hopefully ten o'clock, okay? So come by, June sixth. I have some flyers over in the back. If you feel free, please come and pick one up. The time is from five o'clock to nine o'clock. This is a Special Improvement District event. Thank you very much. Is there's any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Capezza. We had a couple of people sign up.
Sure.
For public comment. If you just stepped to the side, I'll call them up. Craig Halloran? Yep.
Craig Halloran won twenty dollars for place. Couple of years ago, whenever, when the Clark property was signed over to the developer, Sid lost twenty-five grand in funding. And in the years I've been going to meetings, I've never heard of any attempt to make that loss up. I mean, it's maybe not in my business, but twenty-five grand is a lot of money to lose for anybody who does stuff as fine as Felipe and Sid in our great city.
Okay, let me answer that question. About a year ago, I spoke to the owner of the developer, and he assured me that he would reimburse us with those 25,000 dollars that we lost. It's not his fault. It was just the way the financial department worked it out on the financial agreement. So that being said, he's more than kind enough to reimburse that money, but I believe it's going to be a one-time only. It's not going to be a yearly, I think. I don't know if we're going to be able to change that agreement, I don't know if we still have time to change the agreement, but we will get those 25,000 dollars back, Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Halloran. John Kazar.
All right, John Kazar, 23, West Mansell Avenue. All right. First, I think it's a little unfair. I wanted to say something on the municipal budget. I think it's unfair to put a sign-in sheet up before you present it, and then present it, and then, like, you should have asked, does anyone else have questions? Because we didn't get to see it, so I had some questions on it. I had some, some things. All right. The, so the Sid budget. So we were over budget. We hired somebody to find out why we're over budget. He mentioned, you mentioned Eric Clark. I'm confused. I know Mike Bono, we do, he does the Thursday night house parties. Mike Bono would give him 600 bucks. I think that's a lot. I don't know how much you need to throw a house party. We're giving him seventeen hundred dollars an evening for a few hours at, you want to find places where bleeding money, that might be one. Also, the Wood Ever redesign. What exactly is that, 26,000? I don't know. That's always been on the, the budget every year. And signage for the Sid District. Are you talking about more awnings or, or what? Right here, the signage.
The signage is thirteen forty-seven.
No, no, I'm talking, I'm sorry, 6,000, right here, signage for Sid District, Wood Ever redesign. But let's just start with those things.
It's thirteen forty-seven.
Okay, right here, signage for Sid District, 6,300.
You got the wrong one.
I got, I got the one that you guys gave me. How?
This is the one that I just read, so I don't know where you got that information from.
This, it's right here. They gave it to me. Okay, well.
Does it have my signature on it?
From Felipe Capazes to Alexis Zach, okay? It says 26,000 for Wood Ever redesign, signage 6,000. How, how do we get two different numbers here? Okay?
Let me answer that again. I have it in my hand. It's 1,347 dollars. This is the one that I'm presenting. This, hopefully, this is the one that's going to get passed.
This is just in line with the fraud, abuse, and waste of the Armstead administration. You're handing out official documents, and I got a thing that's 5,000 dollars more? Everyone else has it, right? Am I the only one that says 6,000? Right, everyone says 6,000, correct? Okay, all right. So, so why are we paying a Thursday night house party 1,700 dollars for a few hours when Mike Bono, your predecessor, did 600 dollars?
Let me answer that again. In the year 2023, the Sid District was assigned to do several events in the Sid District. And House Music is one of them. Comedy Night is another one. We had the Latin Festival is the third one. So that's where that comes from.
That doesn't answer the question. Why? It's the same event. It's the same event. It's the same event on Thursday night.
Everything goes up. Everything has a higher price.
Three times?
I, I can't help that.
Three times? Okay, so, so look, look into that. We're wasting money, and that's why the Sid is over budget. Thank you.
That's it for public comment. Nobody else signed up.
That's it?
That's it. Okay, Mr. Kaminski.
All right, thank you, sir. I respect the job that you're trying to do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Ed Kaminski, Maple Avenue. Thank you. But I think you have to keep it simple, right? So it's, keep the place, what is the mission of the Sid, first of all, right? It's to bring people and, and reinvigorate the downtown, okay? You're not going to do that by overpaying for some things that aren't necessary, and quite frankly, they're a nuisance, okay? Security is huge. Just had a shooting right over here. We've had stabbings. We've had right across the street, a shooting over, just, this is just over the last handful of months. This does not help the image, so maybe investing instead of 1,700 dollars for, quite frankly, a silly dance party, maybe security. Also, trash doesn't take the weekend off. Linden is just disgusting in terms of dirt as it is. Over the weekend, stuff isn't picked up. Maybe you hire somebody to kind of clean up and keep things tidy over the weekend because it just multiplies over the weekend. So again, keep it simple. Remember what the mission is. It's to help the businesses. And when we run these things downtown, I mean, I'm just, first of all, listen, nobody loves a party more than me, but they're just ridiculous. It just, like, just, let's call a spade a spade. It's ridiculous pandering, and that's all it is, okay? We could do without it. We had, you know, in years bygone, we had these downtown festivals where there were sidewalk sales, where it actually helped the business people. All these things that we do downtown, they don't help the businesses. I talk to all these business folks. I'm friends with many of them, and it kills them. And it really gets me when we have, for instance, a Polish community, right? Latin community, and I see these trucks when we have these things, they're not even from Linden. They're from Pennsyl, somewhere from Pennsylvania. So again, keep it simple, remember the mission, and save money. Like, a lot of this stuff is just waste, to Mr. Kazar's point. Thank you.
And the security issue, that's a police department issue. You should address that to the police department. I mean, I had no control over that.
Anybody else want to speak? Okay, seeing none. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the 2025 Sid budget, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the hearing and adopt the Sid budget and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kazar.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have a presentation on the Everbridge Alert System.
Council President.
Yes.
After speaking with our media people, we're going to try to design something that's a little more palatable for the public to understand, and we're going to put it out there on TV 36 and TV 42, and actually give them a link to go to, to be able to better understand how to sign up for it. But I do have a, a written response. It reads, "We're improving our emergency messaging system, so effective immediately, residents will be able to sign up and receive general and emergency notifications through Everbridge. The system will replace the Nixle platform, which is also owned by Everbridge, that is currently utilized. The new system allows residents enhanced features and customization, allowing them to receive the messaging they want and ignore the ones that they don't want. It also allows residents to choose to receive information via text, email, push notifications, on all of the above. Unfortunately, everyone will have to register for Everbridge, even if you're currently receiving Nixle alerts. The transition is expected to be completed on or about June 1st, 2025, but there's no need to worry. All users will still receive Nixle alerts throughout the transition period." So we will be publishing something, again, on TV 36 and TV 42 to help assist the residents with, with signing up for the new app. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we're going to now move on to ordinances on hearing. Ordinance 6918 and 6920 will be removed from consideration this evening. There'll be no public hearing on them. Okay, so that's, again, that's 6918 and 6920. Okay. So we'll start with 6914, please. Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Please state your name and.
John Kazar, Mansell Ave. On the ordinance. Before I ask my question on the ordinance, I just want everyone in, in attendance to see that Resolution 254. It's on the resolutions. They're changing the law tonight to limit us to speaking on the ordinances.
This is only on this ordinance, sir.
For 30 minutes, okay? I find it very peculiar that they're changing the laws after what happened last month at the last meeting.
Mr. Kazar, you're out of order, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you have a comment on the ordinance, you can make it.
I just wanted to let the public know exactly what's happening.
It doesn't matter, sir, what you want to let the public know.
Okay.
You have to limit your comments to the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. 6914, all right. I actually forgot my question. Sorry, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion that we close the hearing on ordinance 6914. Approve it and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6915, please.
A bond ordinance providing an appropriation of 423,500 dollars for the network infrastructure project, and authorizing the issuance of 402,325 dollar bonds or notes of the city for financing part of the appropriation.
Has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the hearing on ordinance 69-15. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6916, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7, Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled in Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7, Traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Chapter 7, Traffic, Parking by Permit Only in Designated Residential Areas, 7-15.7, Residential Overnight Parking, Add D, Bayway Area, Resident Parking Permit, and definition and word uses as used in the subsection. The following terms shall have the meanings indicated. City, the City of Linden, Bayway Area, the area of the city, which includes Allen Street, Bachelor Avenue, Meacham Avenue, South Broad Street, Ogden Street, Thomas Street, Battle Place, Clem Avenue, and Greer Avenue, restricted between Allen Street to Bachelor Avenue.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the hearing on ordinance 69-16. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6917, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7, Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled in Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7, Traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Chapter 7, Traffic, 7-33 Handicap Parking Regulations, 7-33.1A Handicap Parking on the Street. Remove 418 Husser Street, 1, 1 space. Add 1,008 Lincoln Street, 1 space.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the hearing on ordinance 69-17. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6918, it's going to, can I have a motion to remove it from consideration, please?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to make a motion to remove that 6918 for consideration and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
6919, please.
Bond ordinance providing appropriation of 3,68,600 dollars for various improvements for the Department of Parks and Recreation, and authorizing the issuance of 863,170 dollar bonds or notes of the city for financing part of the appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to move that the hearing for ordinance number 6919 be closed. The ordinance adopted, and I will request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6920, can we have a motion to remove it from consideration, please?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to make a motion that we remove 6918 from consideration and ask for a second.
Second. Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6921, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19-1.3, entitled permits by the City Council of the City of Linden.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
It's Council President, I'd like to make a motion that we close 6921 and ask for a second.
Second. Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Ordinance 6922, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 10-2.1, entitled Subcode Fees by the City of Linden, by the City Council in the City of Linden. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Linden as follows. Section 1, Chapter 10-2.1, entitled Subcode Keys, shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced as follows.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, I move to close the public hearing of ordinance number sixty-nine, twenty-two and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance sixty-nine, twenty-three, please.
A bond ordinance providing an appropriation of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the City Hall parking garage renovations for the Division of Engineering for and by the City of Linden and authorizing the issuance of eight hundred and thirty thousand bonds or notes of the city for financing part of the appropriation.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to move that the hearing for ordinance number sixty-nine, twenty-three be closed. The ordinance adopted and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance sixty-nine, twenty-four, please.
A bond ordinance providing appropriation of one million, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars for various capital improvements for the Division of Transportation and Properties for and by the City of Linden and authorizing the issuance of one million, fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar, four hundred and fifty dollar bonds or notes of the city for financing part of the appropriation.
Has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to move that the hearing for ordinance number sixty-nine, twenty-four be closed. The ordinance adopted and I request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance sixty-nine, twenty-five, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter seven, traffic of an ordinance entitled an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden nineteen ninety-nine, passed November twenty-third, nineteen ninety-nine, and approved November twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, and as amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the council of the City of Linden, Section one, that Chapter seven, traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Seven dash nineteen, parking, stopping or standing prohibited at all times, safety sticks. Seven dash nineteen point six, locations, add West Blanky Street, North Side, East Blanky Street, North Side, East Blanky Street, South Side, four hundred block of Northwood Avenue, West Side, five hundred block of Northwood Avenue, West Side, three hundred block of Roselle Street, West Side, twenty-four hundred block of East Linden Avenue, South Side, twenty-five hundred block of East Linden Avenue, South Side, three hundred block of Ashton Avenue, East Side.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the hearing on sixty-nine dash twenty-five. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance sixty-nine, twenty-six, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter seven, traffic of an ordinance entitled an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden nineteen ninety-nine, passed November twenty-third, nineteen ninety-nine, and approved November twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, and as amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the council of the City of Linden, Section one, that Chapter seven, traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Seven dash twenty-seven, bus stops, add East Price Street, eastbound, on the northwesterly side.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the hearing on ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty-six. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, ordinance sixty-nine, twenty-seven, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter seven, traffic of an ordinance entitled an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden nineteen ninety-nine, passed November twenty-third, nineteen ninety-nine, and approved November twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, and as amended and supplemented, be it ordained by the council of the City of Linden, Section one, that Chapter seven, traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Seven dash fifteen, parking by permit only in designated residential areas. Seven dash fifteen point seven, residential overnight parking, delete seven dash fifteen point seven C, North Park Avenue area, seven dash fifteen point seven D, one. Definition and word usage, add seven dash fifteen point seven point C, North Park Avenue, add seven dash fifteen dash seven D, Bayway Avenue.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the hearing on ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty-seven. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, ordinance sixty-nine, twenty-eight. Could I have a motion, please, to table it to the June meeting?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to table sixty-nine, twenty-eight to the next meeting in June and request a second. Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, ordinance sixty-nine, twenty-nine, could I have a motion to table that also to the June meeting?
Yes, Council President, likewise, I'd like to make a motion to table the ordinance number sixty-nine, twenty-nine to the June meeting and request a second. Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, well now moved on to consent agenda items. All items listed with asterisks are considered routine by the City Council, who have been acting with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members so request. We have items number one through four this evening. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to move for approval on consent items one through four. And I ask for a second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay. Now move on to governing body reports. Councilwoman Orman, would you begin your report with the twenty twenty-five budget statement, please?
Yes, Council President. The budget hearing statement, the introduced budget represents a total of one hundred and thirty-eight million, seven, one hundred and thirty million, seven hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and seventy-three cents in expenditures for the year twenty twenty-five. The Finance Committee will continue to work to further reduce expenses wherever possible. The Finance Committee has worked with every department head in keeping expenditures to a minimum. Based on the average assessed home value of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, this year's increase is three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents for the year, or twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents per month. This includes an annual increase of seventeen dollars and seventy-one cents, state mandated increase for the library portion of the tax rate. I would like to thank all the members of the governing body for their assistance and recommendations on the twenty twenty-five budget. I would like to especially thank every department head for their dedication and diligence in reducing their twenty twenty-five municipal budgets wherever possible. I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Be it resolved by the council members of the City of Linden, County of Union, that the budget herein, herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorizing the amount of seventy-two million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents for municipal purposes and three million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars and forty-two cents for the minimum library tax.
Okay, now could we have a motion, please?
Now I make a motion to approve this and ask for a second again.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Orman, will you continue with your normal report, please?
Okay, I'd like to also do the budget review and finance report for the month of May. Approval is requested for the following finance actions. Payment of bills totaling two million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Bills have been signed by the mayor, council president, and the finance chairwoman, and a detailed check, register, and vouchers are on file in the city clerk's office. We are in receipt of the investments made by the city treasurer for the month of April at the rate of four point one five percent. I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, I'm going to be really brief because this meeting already is extremely long, so I'm not going to take my full five minutes for the report. I just want to just let the residents of the first ward know and apologize for some of the inconvenience that we've had during, in the area of weed sheath, Washington, walnut, and first through fourth. We finally finished the paving on the streets, and while the inconvenience was temporary, the results are going to be long-lasting. They look absolutely beautiful, and so many of you have called, you know, thanking the city and the engineering department for their efforts. So I want to extend my appreciation for getting that done. It was definitely long overdue. And the only other thing that I would like to mention is that we are one community, we are one body here in the city of Linden, and it's imperative that we learn to get along with one another. We have a parking issue in lots of our areas, but I just wanted to stress that no one person owns the spot in front of their home. No one does. Write them down to me. So if somebody parks in the spot in front of your home, they have the right to do so. And my only recommendation is be friendly to your neighbors. Learn who they are. Get to know them. And if they see that you have a need for your young adult daughter to park in front of your house because she comes home at 1:00 in the morning from a job, or if you have a child with special needs and you really need to be close to your door and you don't necessarily qualify for a handicap placard, be nice to your neighbor. They may sit back and understand and be more than glad to oblige you and take your consideration. It's all about knowing your neighbor, speaking to your neighbor, and being friendly towards one another because we are always going to be one Linden, one community only. That ends my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Javick?
Thank you, Council President. As chairman of the fire committee, the Fire Prevention Bureau received, the Fire Prevention Bureau collected the following monies during the month of March 2025, a total of $22,239.18. The Fire Prevention Bureau, also the Fire Prevention Bureau, collected the following monies during the month of April 2025, a total of $9,420.18. Regarding the Linden Fire Department ambulance billing, the amount of $85,715.35 for March 2025 have been added to the total deposits for 2025 totaling $279,194.17. And regarding the ambulance billing for, well, the amount, the amount of $86,607.77 for April 2025 have been added to the total deposits for 2025 totaling $365,801.94. Now for the month of, oops, excuse me, a second here. So, construction code. The department has issued 192 permits and processed 33 certificates and has issued 49 summonses for the month of March 2025. Monthly revenue is as follows: Building CCO permits and additional permit fees, $83,378; zoning, $2,575; court settlements for the month, $32,250; the reflective total being Now for the month of April, this department has issued 240 permits and processed 63 certificates and has issued 73 summonses. The monthly revenue is as follows: Building CCO permits and additional permit fees, $60,208; zoning, $2,000; court settlements for the month were $29,750; that reflective total being $91,958. Regarding our Board of Health update, the Board of Health held their annual rabies vaccination clinic for dogs and cats this past month. In total, the following number of dogs and cats were vaccinated: Dogs, 223; cats, 42; that total being $265. Now that the warmer weather is upon us, the Board of Health would like to remind residents to maintain their property as required by city ordinances by moving, by mowing the lawns regularly to keep it between, keep it below six inches in height, trimming shrubs, shrubs, and removing weeds, and keeping debris of any kind from accumulating on properties. We would also like to remind residents that the code of the city of Linden was recently amended to reduce the amount of time to abate such violations from 10 days to three. Our office will still continue to send out notice of violation through regular and certified mail, but the housing inspectors have been instructed to also post notices of violation on properties at the time the violation is observed. And owners will have three days from the date of that notice to comply with the municipal ordinance indicated on that, on the notice. Please also note that multiple summonses for violations of municipal ordinances can be issued if such violations remain unabated. If anyone has questions about property maintenance requirements or Board of Health procedures regarding property maintenance issues, please contact the Board of Health, 908-474-8409. And one more reminder that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental Health Awareness Month was established in 1949 to share the importance of mental health and wellness and to celebrate recovery from mental health disorders. Mental health awareness is important for everyone and at all stages of life. Two resources that can help are 988, a 24/7 suicide and crisis lifeline that provides free and confidential support. Also, findtreatment.gov, that's a confidential and anonymous resource for persons seeking treatment for mental health and substance use disorders in the U.S. and its territories. Good evening, everybody. So around our second ward, we have actually been working on addressing the speeding on our streets and the overtonnage of trucks and new targeted, with new targeted signage. By clearly stating the fine amount of $1,000, truck drivers are more reluctant and will think twice about going down our residential streets. In our city, quality of life issues are very important to everyone. With the better weather arriving, more people are out and about in your neighborhoods. Dog owners, please leash and pick up after your pet, and remember, our parks are not a place to let your dogs, pets run free.
Councilman?
We, we have two designated, we have two designated dog parks in Linden for that. We have Lexington Dog Park on Lexington Avenue and the second ward, which is in the second ward, and Memorial Field Dog Park on Lower Road in the seventh ward. Another issue is making sure, or another issue in the ward is, is making sure your carboards, recyclables, and garbage don't end up on your neighbor's lawn, especially on windy days. And above all, please cut your grass. Remember, mutual respect is earned. If anyone has, if anyone has trees or sidewalks that need to be addressed, from getting on the new planting list to trimming list to sidewalks raising, raised by existing trees, please reach out to me at 908-494-4608, or email me at bjaviklinden-nj jersey.gov. On Facebook, Second Ward Councilman Barry Javick. And as always, additional information can be found on our City of Linden website. May you all have an enjoyable year ahead. Council President, your report.
Okay, Councilwoman Caldwell.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Good evening, third ward neighbors. As the IT Chair, the City of Linden's IT Department continues, continues its important work, including ongoing cybersecurity training and voice-over-IP migration project, which is currently in progress. While there have been attempted cybersecurity attacks, Telly App has done an outstanding job in protecting the city of Linden. Special thanks to Josh Weiss and the Telly App team for their commitment and expertise in keeping our systems and residents safe. As far as Linden Social Services, they support residents in applying for benefits such as cash assistance, food assistance, health insurance, energy aid. These services, these services can be accessed in person at 1120 East St. George Ave., Suite 4, Linden, New Jersey, 908-474-8620. If you know someone you in need and you, and you need them to check their eligibility, their eligibility for a local food pantry, please reach out to Linden Social Services. Again, their number is 908-474-8620. I'm trying to go as fast as possible, Madam President. Reflections on April 15, 2025 governing body meeting. I want to address the unfortunate events that took place during the governing body meeting on April 15, 2025. In all my years in public service, I have never witnessed such disrespect towards the governing body, especially towards Madam President. The behavior exhibited was unacceptable. I would sincerely like to thank the Linden Police Department for managing the situation with professionalism and calm. However, I must stress that the environment was unsafe for all members of the governing body. We were essentially sitting ducks. While I understand that people want a voice, their voice is heard, there is a proper and respectful way to go about it. Actions that undermine safety and decorum are out of order. That, with that said, I'm proud that we now have a handle on the situation, and I remain hopeful that we can move forward constructively. Linden is a city that celebrates diversity and inclusion. I have lived in this city for 52 years and can confidently say that we are one of the most welcoming communities in New Jersey. Neighbors speak to one another, help one another, show kindness regardless of your race, religion, or background. As a black woman, I understand discrimination. I've lived it, I've felt it, I know the sting of being treated unfairly. That is why I make it my mission to treat everyone equally and respectfully. My constituents know I am consistent and fair, but community is a two-way street. Respect must go both ways. If I greet you, I expect the same in return. That's how we build a strong, united Linden. A strong community is built on mutual respect, shared responsibility, and courage to stand against injustice, not just for ourselves but for one another. On May 27, the third ward will have a community meeting at Linden Public Library, the Columbia Room on the third floor at 6:30, 30 East Henry Street, Linden, New Jersey. I also want to extend a special thank you for Public Works, David Martinez, for having his team cut the grass by the tracks. Even though it's not their responsibility, your efforts are truly appreciated, and I commend you for your continued dedication to maintaining the beauty and cleanliness of our city. Your work plays an important role in keeping Linden's appearance welcoming and well-kept for who live, work, and visit here. Thank you again for your prompt attention and your ongoing support. And on a personal note, I want to wish my niece, Autumn Buell, she'll be graduating soon, and I, and Aunt Mo is very proud and excited to see what your future holds. If you have any concerns, I can be reached at 908-531-0676. My email is m c a l d w e l l at linden-nj jersey.gov, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caldwell. Right on the dot.
Project manager.
Yep. Councilman Mohammed.
Thank you, Council President. First and foremost, I'd like to extend the congratulations and my prayers to the election of the president. This is titled, "The Vision for Rome," to all the Rome council, all the citizens of the world, building in a world of unity. Number two, I'd like to speak about mental health right now, and I feel, and I want to speak especially to those who might be in early or mid recovery. It is said in recovery treatment that it takes five years to get your brain back, another five years, little hours. So if anyone needs any referral.
Councilwoman Pinter, microphone on.
Anyone needs any referral, don't help, you can call me at 908-463-4843. You don't have to take your frustrations out on people, you don't have to take your frustrations out on governmental bodies, go and get professional help. And lastly, I would like to offer my sympathy to Ms. Doris Bowden, a teacher in the Linden Public Schools and a great resident of the fourth ward. God bless her family, and I reached out to them today. You know, some people, when people pass, that's the end of it, you never call the family, but the day after is a very difficult day. So you all join us in prayer and well wishes for the family of Ms. Doris Bowden, a teacher in the Linden Public School system and a very excellent teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rivas.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, distinguished citizens of Linden. I'd like to say hello to all my fifth ward neighbors, and I'd like to start just saying 100 years of the city of Linden. Seventeen years ago, I came to this city. Seventeen years ago, I became a neighbor of the fifth ward. And through all those years, I have learned that we are a diverse city, that we are a great community. I am a testament of it. I would have never thought that I would be here addressing you, addressing any of my citizens without the support of the community, the support of this council chamber, the support of the mayor, Derek Anser, who one, one day said, you know, the Hispanic community needs a representative. We need somebody out there to be the voice. But I'm not just the voice of the Hispanic community, I'm the voice of every citizen of Linden that looks into this city council to get the best that we can do in order to provide the best quality of life that each one of us can have. I have learned many things throughout the years, believe me. I have learned that gratitude is one of the things that we have to embrace. We need to be grateful with every one of, that lives around us, with the neighbors, with anyone that is close to us, because we're not alone in this world. Personally, I have to live that, I have to learn it, and I am thankful to everyone in the community who gave me the opportunity to go through the grieving process and to learn that life, life must go on. We have a great city. Believe me, I am still a believer that we have a great city. I personally believe that I live in the greatest ward that the city has, and no disrespect for the rest of the wards, but I have said here before, in our ward, we got everything. We got the pharmacy, we got restaurants, we got everything that you may imagine. We just need to go out and walk around the streets of our ward to make sure that we're going to learn that we have great neighbors that will greet you, and they will also going to collaborate and help you out as long as we treat each other with respect. I'm not here to lecture anybody, I'm just here to share you my personal experience. I am forever going to be grateful to this city, but I am also going to be respectful to every one of the city who needs a voice, and that voice needs to be heard. And whenever you have the opportunity to, want to, you be heard, you need to do it with respect. We need to have organization, and then I'm really, I really, I believe that the organization is needed in everything. But going back to our ward, I have continued to work the streets and meeting with a lot of my neighbors. I'd like to let you know there is still public works construction that is going to happen with the gas company on one of our streets, to my neighbors in Essex Street. We're going to be seeing some of the constructions to start soon with a large pipe that our engineering department has informed us about it. Believe me, we thought that we were done with public works in our area with gas and water company, and many of you had oil meters changed and fixed, but there is still some work that needs to be done, and that, all that is because we need to continue the progress and continue to do the great things that we have done for the city. Listen, as I mentioned before, if we do not look out for each other, nobody's going to do it for us. If you need to reach me, you can always do it via email at cribas-linden nj.gov, or my phone number, 908-718-1110. Thank you, Madam President, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Strano.
Okay, Council President, I have the personnel reports, more than a page and a half. I'm going to speed read this, so if I trip over my lip, please excuse me. All right, so number one, in the Treasury Department approving the summer hours for Isabel Gonzalez. Clerk one to 35 hours per week from May 7, 2025 through September 8 of 2025, with no change in her salary. Two, in the community services in the Division of Transportation and Parking, A is approving the transfer of Kevin Clark, labor effective May 5, 2025, from the Division of Public Works and no salary change. In the Division of Public Works, A is approving to post in contiguous counties for two mechanics, Tier Two, full-time at the hour, annual wage of $18 to $49.09 per hour. B is approving to post for two truck drivers, Tier Two, full-time at the annual wage of $22 to $36, $37 per hour. C is approving the promotion of Ashton Giles to motor room operator, Tier Two, full-time at the annual rate of $30.45 per hour, effective May 21 of 2025. D is approving the promotion of Damian Johnson to motor room operator, Tier Two, full-time at the annual rate of $31.66 per hour, effective May 21 of 2025. E is approving the voluntary resignation and good standing of Tyleek Anderson, a labor effective May 7, 2025. F is approval of the seasonal list that's on file in the city clerk's office. And the Division of Engineering, A is approving the appointment of Ashley Barcello, student intern at the rate of $16.13 per hour, effective May 19, 2025 to August 31 of 2025. B is approving the reposting of two assistant engineers statewide at the salary range of $54,000 to $92,463. C is approving the appointment of Rafael Torre, a student intern at the rate of $16.13 per hour, effective June 16 of 2025 to August 29 of 2025. D is approving the appointment of Tyrone Hamilton, a student intern at the rate of $16.13 per hour, effective May 17, 2025 to August 31 of 2025. In the Police Department, A is approving the appointment of Khalil McLeod, police recruit at the annual salary of $45,521, effective July 7 of 2025, and that's subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. B is approving the appointment of Jonathan Brooke, police recruit at the annual salary of $45,521, effective July 7, 2025, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. C is approving the appointment of Austin Urban, police recruit at the annual salary of $45,521, effective July 7 of 2025, and that is subject to successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. In the Office of the Clerk, A is approving the appointment of Cecilia Ortiz-Vargas, clerk one, full-time at the annual salary of $37,298, effect, effective date to be determined, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements, effective May 27 of 2025. B is approving the appointment of Medalia Ortiz, clerk one bilingual, full-time at the annual salary of $37,298, effective to be determined, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements, and this will be effective May 27 of 2025. In the Office of Construction, approving the appointment of Jackson Freeman, a plumbing inspector, part-time per diem, not to exceed 25 hours a week, at the annual salary, annual rate of $50 per hour, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements, and that's effective June 2 of 2025, and the city hereby grants a residency waiver. B is approving the appointment of Mark Anico, a building inspector, part-time per diem, not to exceed 25 hours per week at the annual rate of $50 per hour, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements, effective June 2 of 2025. The city hereby grants a residency waiver. And C is approving the appointment of Ronald Soto, a code officer, enforcement officer, part-time per diem, not to exceed 25 hours per week at the annual rate of $20 per hour, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements, and that will be effective June 2 of 2025. And the Recreation Department is approving the seasonal list that's on file in the clerk's office. Seven is the Office of Business Administrator approving the posting for a clerk, one, full-time at the annual salary range between $37,298 to $64,870. In the Court, approving the posting for two clerks, part-time at the annual rate of $20.49 an hour to $22.90 per hour. B is the reposting for a violations clerk, full-time statewide at the annual rate of $49,551 to $90,597. C is approving the title change for Daniella Arubi to a violations clerk, full-time, with no change in salary, effective May 21 of 2025. D is approving the appointment of Chitaya Clayborne, clerk one, temporary, part-time, not to exceed 25 hours a week, at the annual rate of $20.49 per hour, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements, effective June 2 of 2025. Nine in the Fire Department is approving the request to begin background checks for three firefighter candidates for the September 2025 Fire Academy. And ten is in Personnel approving the FMLA and NJ FLA leave that's on file in the Division Personnel. And B is approving the amendment to the city policies to adopt the yearly meal and incidental reimbursement rate established by the United States General Services Administration. Said amendment shall not amend any meal reimbursement provision contained in any city collective negotiations agreement. Move for approval, ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Go ahead, Council.
Okay, real quick, I just wanted to shout out once again to all those people that volunteered the cleanups at our rain gardens and also the properties that were Blue Acres areas where the people had taken a buyout and were trying to reestablish the natural configuration of those properties, mainly Arthur Street, Arthur, Irene, and Madison. But Philip 66 provided for one day, and Williams Pipeline another, Conservation Group out of Elizabeth, they've, they've sent a bunch of volunteers. Our DPW crew, our public properties crew, and Joe Krowbeck and Stephanie in Engineering, I just wanted to shout out to them, very, thank you very much for the efforts that they make. And a little public service announcement, dog license, dog and cat licenses are available starting June 1. Just one.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ormstead.
Yes, thank you, Council President. First, I want to start off, and as a chairperson for the city's district, I'd like to thank Felipe, Sandy, and Mickey for doing outstanding work. I see you guys out there doing it, and it just makes me proud to see you guys, how hard you work for this city. You guys ought to be recognized more and commended for the work that you do. Also, Friday, June 6, the outdoor dining day. Come on out and enjoy it. It's, it's going to be something nice, and time is from 5:00 PM to 9:30. Come on out and enjoy yourself, get yourself some good food. I mean, there's all types of food that's going to be there. Come on out and enjoy it. And that's what I have for the city's district that I wanted to say, but I do want to speak on the eighth ward because we do still have some parking issues. People, you have to get your permits. You can come down to City Hall and get your permits for your zone parking. Also, please, like we, Councilman Ormond was speaking about, having respect for your neighbors. If you can't find a part, place to park in front of your house, just don't take it on your own to block somebody's driveway so they're stuck and they can't get out their driveway. I had somebody calling me this morning at 7:30 in the morning about somebody has their car parked in the driveway. So I have to make a call at 7:30 in the morning. Mind you, that it's not fair to that person that lives at their house that has to leave and go to work. and go to work. So I'm just asking them to be mindful. As far as DPW, the guys from DPW, they do an outstanding job in our community, and we really appreciate them. Also, Chandler Avenue will be done very soon. Okay, so I know I've given a thousand calls about Chandler Avenue and the pavement. We also have some new signs that are going to go up on Chandler Avenue for the disabled children, autistic children. We're going to have some new signs put up there. We're trying to slow this traffic down because people are coming through there flying like they're in jets. And that's all I have for my report for today.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ninth Ward residents and everyone joining us today. I want to share a quick update on what's going on in our neighborhood. We have some major roadwork coming. Orchard Terrace, Edgewood to Firmwood, construction starts soon. Firmwood Terrace to Orchard Terrace, plans are being made now, work should begin by the summer. The following roads are scheduled to be fixed using capital budget, Princeton Road, Livingston Road, Melrose, Terrace, and Edgewood Roads. The state is checking water lines across the city to make sure they are safe. The work is being done by Montana Construction. If they find O-Lad pipes, they will replace them for free, but they do need permission from the homeowner. If they haven't finished your home yet, it's likely because they need your permission. So please cooperate so they can finish the job. Our department is doing their best to keep up with Wilson Pond. I apologize. Our department is doing their best to keep clean Wilson Pond Tennis Court and the basketball area. I'm asking residents to be considerate. I want to remind everyone that littering is illegal in Linden, and we take it seriously. If you're caught, you will be fined. There was a complaint about property damage by the water company. Here's what you should do. Utility companies usually have the right to do necessary work, but they should notify you. They're required to fix any damage they cause. I already contacted our city engineer to look into the issues. If your lawn hasn't been fixed, or you haven't heard back from them, reach out to me directly and I'll help you follow up. I'm walking through the ward and making a list of sidewalks that need repair. If your sidewalk was damaged by a city tree, the city will fix it. If not, homeowners are responsible, but if you're not sure, just ask me and I'll check up on it. Residents, permit parking is being enforced because of the parking problems from nearby apartments on Wood Avenue. If this affects you, or you need some help understanding the rules, please contact me. I've also reported several properties to the Board of Health for trash and tall grass. If you notice any other upkept properties, send me the address. Property owners must take care of their land, or they'll get a summons. If you have any questions or concern, or just want to talk, please contact me directly at arrodrigues@linden-nj.gov or give me a phone call at 908-858-0269. Thank you all, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Councilwoman Hudak.
Thank you. So in the Tenth Ward, the potholes will be addressed as soon as the rain stops. The alleged illegal car lots and alleged illegal car repair shops are being enforced with summonses. The vehicles that are there more than forty-eight hours are going to be placed with orange stickers and will be towed. Grass is being monitored. After three days of non-compliance, a summons will be issued. Now, I want to thank everyone who is maintaining your property. Your hard work and dedication is appreciated in keeping the premises in good condition. Your efforts are greatly valued and you are seen. And on behalf of the Tenth Ward, I'd like to extend our heartfelt congratulations to all the recent graduates of higher education in any trade school and to those who will be graduating from pre-K3 all the way up to our Linden High School seniors. Your hard work, dedication, and perseverance, it led to this occasion and this significant milestone, and we are incredibly proud of all of your accomplishments. And this weekend will be Memorial Day, and this is a day to mourn and to honor all of its deceased servicemen and women, and it's a day of remembrance for those who made the ultimate sacrifice. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Following up on that note, Memorial Day, a lot of people see it as the kickoff to summer, but as Councilwoman Hudak said, it's a day to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice. So here in Linden, we have many monuments throughout the city, and Monday you will see the veterans going around placing wreaths on all the monuments. We invite all the residents to please come out for a few minutes to your local monument. The veterans would love to see you. It's a very nice event throughout the city. So please, Monday, they leave the American Legion at 8:00 a.m., usually concludes around 12:00. I believe in Life in Linden, there's a listing of the times for the different monuments, but I'm sure we'll have something on the city's social media shared from the veterans on that. Okay, on another note, we're going to be kicking off our entertainment season. I believe these are out in the hallway. They have a list of all our concerts. A lot of work goes into planning all this, so yes, please try to come out and hear one of our concerts. There should be something for everyone on this list, so that's important. And as many of my colleagues have mentioned here on council, grass is a big issue in this city. Please make sure you take the time to cut your lawn. If your neighbor's ill, reach out, try to help them out. It just brings down the property values and makes this city look terrible, your neighborhoods. So grass is important. Just cutting the grass can make such a difference to your property. So please, make sure you do that. I'd like to acknowledge one of our retirees in the City Clerk's Office, Joan Turbit is retiring. She started here in the city right after high school, and she's worked her entire life here in the city of Linden, so she'll be retiring June 1, so I want to wish her the best in all her endeavors. Okay, if anyone needs to reach me, my email is myamakitis@linden-nj.gov. You'll find that on the city website. I understand that's hard to know how to spell, but if you look for Council President on there, you'll find my email address. And my telephone number is 908-494-0880. Mayor, you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I have a public service announcement. The Board of Public Utilities, New Jersey's Department of Community Affairs, and Union County Commissioners will be sponsoring a Utility Assistance Day. The date will be June 11, 2025, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at John Tegugoro Center at 330 Helen Street. So if you need help with utility bills, this event will connect you with free utility grant programs. Also, we have a correspondence. Happy to report that the workers' compensation claims for the city of Linden was reduced by 20% in 2024. The Garden State GIF has provided the city with a certificate of recognition, has also issued a $5,000 award check. The city of Linden's Insurance Commission holds mandatory quarterly safety meetings with all departments and continues to work very hard to implement various training and safety measures to reduce our workers' compensation claims for the year. We also have our 15th Annual Fishing Derby. We honor a guy named Butchy Scholes. Butchy Scholes was a, worked in our Department of Community Services. Butchy Scholes was a special person. He was the type of guy who could do a little bit of anything, little plumbing, little carpentry, little electric, and he was a guy who didn't run from work. If you asked him to do something, he would do it. So I think it's fitting and appropriate that we honor him for his hard work that he did for the city. He passed some years back, but again, his work ethic remains, we remember his work ethic. That's going to be Sunday, June 1, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Wilson Park in Linden here. Last but certainly not least, I'd like to thank Alex Zach and the Finance Department for giving us a decent budget again this year. There has been an increase, but as you all know, we work very hard to prevent increases. We had seven consecutive years of no tax increases, and unfortunately, you just can't do it every year. We have a lot of unfunded mandates that are given to us by the state, and insurance premiums have increased, so it just became very difficult to hold the line again. But I can assure you that we have some very good projects coming online. We have our RNG Energy down on the other side in the Tremely Point section. We have a number of apartment buildings coming online soon, as well as some other projects. And I'm going to assure this community that we will be able to go back to our tax-saving ways again in the next couple of years. So I look forward to these projects coming online, and I look forward to being able to continue providing the necessary tax relief that the citizens of Linden are so accustomed to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on to resolutions. Okay, can I have a motion to remove Resolutions 2025-274 and 2025-275 be removed from the agenda? Request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormon.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Okay, now, could I have a motion to approve Resolutions 2025-251 through 2025-282, please?
Yes, Council President. I'd like to move Resolutions 2025-251 to 2025-282, with the exception of the two that were removed, and I request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormon.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes, to all, respectfully abstaining in 254 and 260.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Bodak, you have additional resolution for this evening?
There's a walk-on resolution, which will be Number 2025-283. Whereas the Township of Scotch Plains does not have sufficient staff in the position of municipal court clerk staff in order to operate its municipal court, and whereas the city employs municipal court clerk staff with knowledge of the operations of a municipal court in the state of New Jersey, and whereas the city has determined that it will permit its municipal clerical staff to perform municipal court duties for the Township of Scotch Plains, and whereas the city and the township have entered into an agreement for a period not to exceed six months for the Township of Scotch Plains to utilize the services of the city's municipal court clerk staff to perform said duties on behalf of the township, and whereas NJSA 40A colon 65-4 at sequence allows the city and the township to enter into a shared services agreement for the use of the aforementioned municipal clerical services staff. Now therefore be it resolved that the city authorizes the mayor to execute a shared services agreement with the Township of Scotch Plains for the aforementioned services pursuant to the attached shared services agreement. Be it further resolved that this resolution become effective upon the execution of the shared services agreement by the Township of Scotch Plains Township Manager.
Okay, can we have a motion for Resolution 2025-283, please?
I guess so. Motion to approve 2025-283. You'd request a second?
Second. Mrs. Ormon.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
[inaudible].
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
And Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Okay, we're going to be moving on to ordinances on introduction, but before we do, just a little housekeeping note. If anyone wishes to speak at the public comment session, please sign in on the white sheet in front of the dais here if you have not done so. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances on first reading. We're starting with Ordinance 6930, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2-24.1(c) and 2-14.5 entitled "Division of Purchasing." Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 2-14.1(c) and Chapter 2-14.5 entitled "Division of Purchasing" shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced as a new section as Chapter 2-8.10 entitled "Division of Purchasing." This ordinance moves the Division of Purchasing under the office of the city administrator.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction, please, of Ordinance 6930?
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance 6930 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormon.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak. Yes. Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Order 6931, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 traffic of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of London 1999," passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of London, Section 1, that Chapter 7 traffic shall be and the same as hereby amended as follows. 7-33 handicap parking regulations, 7-33.1a handicap parking on street, delete one space at 503 Rosewood Terrace, add one space at 1108 Bauer Street, and one space at 3 Berlin Avenue.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Order 6931, please?
Council President, I make a motion to introduce Order 6931 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormon.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak. Yes. Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to comments from members of the public in attendance on city business only. No personal, political, or derogatory comments, please. Okay, we'll start with Craig Halloran. Please state your name and address again for the record.
Craig Halloran, 120 Donaldson Place. First of all, I'd like to compliment Barry Gavik for putting up with me, talking about this house across the street from me. He's well aware of what's going on over there. Somebody owns it, they're not maintaining it. One of the pieces of the gate on the driveway is starting to fall apart. Barry's well aware of it, and I'd like to thank him for his cooperation in this. And Councilwoman Orman, I'd like you to thank you for bringing up the idea that we do have a parking problem and that the city should work with New Jersey Transit because next to the Clark property. I understand that the developer wants to put up a parking garage. With the city's help and hopefully New Jersey Transit cooperation, we can get that done. And the other thing, I'd like to thank Mrs. Zach for answering my question about the budget before the meeting so that she had to take her time during the meeting to answer it. So thank you, Mrs. Zach. And when the city does get around to deciding what they're going to do with the airport, the way I understand they're going to put up warehouses, then maybe what they should do is put up some kind of a museum, because this is an historic spot in our city, one of several. And I think that that should be remembered, as Memorial Day is coming up. This is an important day in one of the wars that our country had put together, many troops, many people. Many people have lost their lives in this war. Okay, and I do think that that's important, to preserve some of our great history. So when they do come up with an idea for the airport, maybe they could put up maybe one warehouse, a new high school, and maybe an area for the Health Department to have a new building to work with. And these things are important to us, important to the citizens of Linden. So please, think about what I've said, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Halloran. Virginia Malek.
Virginia Malek, Lenape Road. Back in December, oh, sorry, I should say in January, the antisemitism article in the handbook was changed, and not the definitions, but the restrictions, and they removed Section C. And that's a very important section where it talks about requirements for full or part-time relatives that are employed. In the summer of 2024, two individuals of a person that works for the city was hired with the, for the Linden Sewerage Commission, and what I'd like to know is, did those individuals, were they vetted by this Section C? And then also, I think maybe our ATV people were hired in 2024, relatives of someone in the city, which I'm pretty sure that was the case, were they vetted? So I'd like to get a response from someone regarding this, or talk to someone later on this. The next item that I have is, someone had mentioned, I think it was Mayor Armstead, talked about Channel 36, are we now on, 36 is now working, because I know I came to the March meeting, and people were talking about using the website, and I was saying, why? I actually saw city council meetings on Channel 36, actually Channel 42, so I'd like to get that clarification. And then the last point is, I asked a number of questions during the March meeting, and Attorney Dan Antonelli was responding, and after a couple of his responses, I had a quick question, so I just said, can you just clarify that? And I won't say it was chastised, but Council President had said to me, well, I'm done talking. Actually, before I gave the floor to Mr. Antonelli, I did have a couple of seconds left, and I was told, no, I can't ask a question again, but this was simply to say or ask, I just need a little bit more clarification, and I wasn't given that. Yes, you have three minutes to talk, but one has to maybe use their discretion for a couple of extra seconds for me to just kind of get in to say, can you please clarify that? That's all I really wanted. I'm done.
Yes, TV 36 is working, okay, and after the meeting, Councilman Strano, you're on the board with the Sewerage Authority, if you can speak to Mrs. Malick? Are you going, that's not a city entity, the, we don't hire through the City of Linden for the Sewerage Authority. She's questioning the Sewerage Authority, I don't know if you could...
No, 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 some of that was a resident, oh, sorry, a person that works for the City of Linden, and even though it's not the board, but there should be some relationship that if a resident or a person that is being hired and is related to someone working for the city, I still consider that nepotism. So if that, if...
Council President, if I just may comment briefly, I mean, I don't know the facts of the situation, but the Linden, the Sewerage Authority is a separate public entity, so any policy that the city has with regard to nepotism would not apply there, and vice versa. So, you know, that's just my simple answer, I don't know enough of the facts, but if you're questioning that issue, they're not two in the same public entities, they are separate public entities.
Right, it's not City of, for us, it's not for the City of Linden, we do not hire, it's the Sewerage Authority, is a separate entity from us.
Council President?
Yes, Mayor?
Mrs. Malick, I do have an outline of what the new people who are running TV 36 and 42 are doing, and what they've achieved so far. I also would like to mention that as much as we can watch it on TV 36 and TV 42, you can now, you can go right to your YouTube and you can watch it live, if you don't have cable, you can now watch it live on your YouTube. 36 and 42 are still working and functional, but again, you can watch it live, if you don't, that means anybody can watch a council meeting, whether they have 42 or 36, all you have to do is have a cell phone. Begging your pardon? Because there's some people who don't have cell phones and would like to watch it at home. Well, you can watch it on both, it's nice to have it on your TV and your cell phone, you got more options, I mean, no, no, not really, it's, we're in a changing world here, the world is changing.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Pat Hero?
Pat Hero, West Elizabeth Avenue. I was very enthused about Linden's incorporation celebration, actually, I've been enthused for quite a while now because of, I used to look at the City Seal and see 1925 and looked forward to 2025 when we would actually have the celebration. My family has been four generations of heroes in Linden, so needless to say, Linden means a lot to me. However, I looked on the Instagram, and Derek Armstead had the Twitter and Instagram, in a Twitter message, the mayor said Linden is turning 100 this year, you are invited to the kickoff celebration, the kickoff celebration of the century, join us Saturday, May 17, at 1:00 p.m. at the promenade. And in an Instagram post under Derek Armstead, it said, let's come together to honor our past, celebrate our present, and look forward to the bright future ahead, I can't wait to see you there, Mayor Derek Armstead. And of course, it was a Linden history trivia game with prizes starting at 1:00 p.m., getting very excited about this, I was there at 12:45 p.m. with a few people, and we were in the promenade, and it was hot at 1 o'clock, but we waited, and we waited, and we waited, and we waited, and we waited some more. Granted, there was some nice music playing, but it was getting very, very hot, some of us, there were seniors. Heat is not very good, heat is actually one of the number-one killers of people, and we waited some more. Now, a very busy man, city clerk and Union County Commissioner Joe Bodak was there at 1 o'clock, he was on time, but the mayor didn't turn up until 2:10. Now, you might say that the mayor is a busy, very busy man, and you should come some slack when it comes to his time. Well, in a New York Times article from June 6, 2022, called "Punctuality is Having a Moment," another mayor was mentioned, the mayor of New York City, Mayor Eric Adams, I would think he's a very busy man, too. His chief of staff said, Mayor Adams is very punctual, if you are five minutes early, you are on time, if you are on time, you are late. A great blog post from Admired Leaders says, how leaders treat time says a lot about who they are. I just want the mayor to be a little bit more punctual, I don't think that's asking too much, please respect your citizens' time, too, and your residents' time, thank you, by the way, as always, for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
I do apologize, but I caught a flat tire on Elizabeth, I just couldn't get there, I'm sorry.
Okay, Kevin Byron?
Please state your name and address for the record, please. Kevin Byron, 754 North Styles Street.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm here to request some attention on Keep Street, near the corner of Gibbons, and the reckless driving that's going on there, it's been an ongoing problem for some time. I've been in contact with our councilperson, Mrs. Orman, via email several months ago, my mother with emails more recently. There's been two accidents there this year, one of which I was in my backyard, witnessed, you know, heard it and ran out. Both cars were totaled, someone blowing the stop sign, crashed into a lady, went up on someone's lawn and hit a parked car in the process. You know, I have two young sons, one of them rides his bike to Linden High School, the other one likes to ride his scooter on that sidewalk. Two of my neighbors' daughters were walking on that street during the accident in February, they were about 20 feet away from the intersection. You know, I'd like to see something done there before someone gets hurt or killed. Some speed humps would be nice, I know cities like Edison have speed humps that slow you down to 10 or 15 miles an hour, I think that would do it, people don't listen to stop signs. At the very least, I'd like to see a four-way stop sign, blinking stop signs, something to get people's attention because it's only getting worse, you know, I don't have a radar gun, but I would venture to say that some people double the speed limit, I could see 45, 50 miles an hour burning down there, and if, you know, if someone loses control of that speed, there's not a lot of room, people have to swerve with parked cars anyway. I have a petition with 50 signatures on it, that I walked up and down Keep Street for those two blocks, I also did Styles Street and the townhouses I live in on both sides, we got 50 signatures, there were two other people here also, two of my neighbors, but they had to leave because they work to speak on this. So I'm hoping something can get done in a timely fashion, again, like I said, before someone gets hurt or killed, you know, people are trying to avoid that traffic light on Styles as it backs up, and they turn down Keep and they burn down the road to get to St. George. I know it's a problem all over Linden, I've been listening to what everyone's been saying about the speeding, but that doesn't help our situation in, on Keep Street, so thank you for your time, and I don't know who to get the petition.
I will take them for the clerk, thank you, sir.
My contact information is on.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did you sign in on the sheet?
Are you on a petition?
Right now, I have Judy Byron, is that? Okay. If you would like to come up with her, ma'am, you can, come up with her?
She's going to say the same thing I did.
Okay, just come up and stand with her.
Okay, Judy Byron, I'm 10 Colonial Road in Roselle, but I am here on behalf of my grandson and my grandsons, because I do worry about them. Like I say, I don't live there, but when I visit, I was talking to my son, and just, we were talking for about 10 minutes, and two cars ran through the stop signs. When I was going home the other day, I'm crossing, I'm crossing Keep Street, somebody's flying down, the window was open, I yelled to them, slow down, he yelled something back, I don't know, he didn't slow down. The only way, all these other things might work, but the speed bumps are going to work, and I know you said emergency vehicles, but other towns have them, they all have them, emergency vehicles still have to slow down, something has to be done, I don't want to be the town that, you know, does something once somebody gets killed. Let's be proactive, let's do it before anything happens. I think most of us have families, kids, grandkids, we all care about this. I know the parking's important, and the grass height is important, but you can't compare it to a human life. I'm sorry, but I feel very strongly about this, I don't want anybody to get hurt, it's just, and people are careless, and now we have a little grocery store, and people are coming out of there and going in there fast, and it's just, it's just gotten out of control, and, you know, I feel, I feel very strongly about this. So I really hope, and I'm asking, you know, we'll even pay for the concrete, and he'll make the bump himself.
I can tell you, we're going to refer to our traffic committee, Councilwoman Orman, I'll give you a chance after we close public comment.
Okay, I know my husband did Oprah or something, he was told to do Oprah, I don't know, but, you know, so if something can be done, and sooner rather than later, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Irela Rodriguez? Irela Rodriguez? Okay, Mario Rodriguez?
Oh, they were the neighbors.
They were the neighbors that left. Okay, come on up to the microphone. Please state your name and address.
My name is Teresa Joseph, I live in North Styles Street, where the easement is shared with the commercial, recently opened, two years ago. I can tell what the problem is in the beginning, because we have a meeting in the Board of Adjustment, where all of you were there, and we had a meeting where there is a design plan presented to them, we had, all of us had a meeting, they make a proposal for the site plan, some of the residents were not there, and we, I was there with my husband and Hector as well, and we kind of agreed some of the restrictions, that we need to have a sidewalk, the road coming from Gibbons in Keep Street, where the Gibbons leads to the easement in the residential of those row houses where I live, should have been one-way, it's not two-way. The standard width of a two-way road, minimum is 25 feet, that's not even including the sidewalk. Now, they're using it as a two-way road, of course, there is going to be a heavy traffic, of course, there is going to be a chaos of coming in and out of the customers, where the customers of that commercial. I don't have anything against the business, because it's the profit of the city, I'm with it, I'm into it. The problem is, when they had presented the site plan, it's supposed to be one-way, and they're supposed to have a speed bump, where the speed bump is movable, it's not stable, they're supposed to have a sidewalk, they're supposed to have a sidewalk where there was nothing. I went to the city of the DPW, I went to do the research and find out to see, there was a second meeting with the Board of Planning, to see if we can come again, and see what the actual final site planning designs. We were not told, I called the city, we were not told that there is going to be a second board meeting from the Board of Planning, nothing was presented to us, there was no transparency. I got so pissed, because I had my daughter that almost got hit, almost got hit, I installed two cameras, and I have evidence of the cameras, that even the customers, those kids, almost get hurt. I had two families in my side, the empty unit, and the other ones is the disabled, the other one is the special need, had a difficulty going into our driveway. You know why the problem is, because of the chaos, they're speeding it, customers are speeding it in the easement, I know this is a shared easement, this is what's causing the problem of the accident between Gibbons and Keep Street, because the customers driving all the way to the shared easement that I live in. I happened to find out why the city has approved the fifth site plan without our permission, without our presence in the Board of Adjustment. This is, this is appalling, that's my biggest concern is.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, John Kazar? John Kazar? Ed Kaminsky?
Good evening, everybody, we touched base on a lot of things I was going to...
Please state your address.
Oh, sorry, Ed Kaminsky, Maple Avenue.
Thank you.
We touched base on many things that we, I'm sorry?
Would you give me the address of Maple Avenue?
201 Maple Avenue. So let me just get right into it, you know, thank you for mentioning Mental Health Awareness Month, it's also, May 29 is 529 Day, and I'm very much involved in the financial world, especially with these type of accounts and on nonprofit boards, so if you're a new parent, a young adult, or any stage of your career, I urge you to Google, I can't give a dissertation now, don't have limited time, but these are wonderful tools to help you for your career, and you'll be surprised how flexible they are, so I just wanted to kind of give a plug and celebrate that. You know, I'm very often up here, we've heard a lot of stories, comes down to quality of life, it gets real every now and then, unfortunately, for me, as literally bullets were flying feet from my house once again, and this one was the closest one in all my years here, and all my years here, I'm on a corner, and I've had murders every direction around me, within tens of yards, but this one was literally feet. So I look at my councilperson to actually help do something, this is condition critical, and this comes on the heels of the shootout, bullets flying at the Applebee's, you know, a couple of weeks before, again, quality of life, other things. The new councilman over there, I know you were pretty giddy and happy about jumping in and helping and doing something like, you know, Councilman Orman did, that train station's disgusting, I take the train every day, I haven't, but there's people camping out there, family, like, it's just gross, and even the other day, you know, last week, the station's not even open, nobody bothers, there's garbage all over, people don't even bother to show up and open up the thing. The festivals, I guess I'll go there, I've made some comments already, like, again, we can do one or two, like, the pandering, the number of them, they're not that well attended, certainly at the very least are going down, I mentioned the reasons before, you know, just have to think better, and unfortunately, my house, because I'm close to here, always, we talked about some of the other quality of life issues, I'm getting blocked by cars, by parking, garbage jumping, when these festivals happening, so when festival season, quarter of festival season comes, I cringe, and certainly, you know, with a Polish background... And certainly, you know, with a Polish background, all my Latin friends, you know, we all certainly know how to party, we don't need the city to do it for us, so maybe we could save some money. Tons of resources go into that, into these things, and they could be definitely used elsewhere. Just walk around the neighborhoods and just look at the condition of them right now, I just did. So I guess the last thing I'll mention, time is running out, business administrator, glad we finally got one, after many years, wondered why. Well, I know that the House of Cards is starting to kind of come in a little bit, you know, so unfortunately, hate to say this, but you're probably going to be the fall guy, fall gal, however you want to look at it, but certainly, I hope I'm wrong there, but I've seen some of these deals, I've seen some of these situations we're in here, and it's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. Okay, can we have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting?
No, no, he crossed his name off, it was Mr. Scootro.
Mr. Scootro.
Yeah, his name was Scoot, he had a, there was a line for it.
Yeah, he said he was leaving, yes. Okay, can we have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting, please?
Council President, make a motion to close the public portion, and ask for a second, please.
Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakakis?
Yes. Okay, comments from members of the governing body? Councilwoman Orman?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank the residents that came in and spoke on the speeding on Keep Street. It is definitely a problem, and I'm finding out throughout the whole entire First Ward, that wherever there is a two-block stretch, which Keep Street is, those are the ones that usually are the shortcuts. We have Seymour, we have Baldwin, we have short streets throughout the whole entire ward, where people really want to just scoot around some of the thoroughfares. It's not fair. I wish I had 1,000 cop cars, 1,000 police cars, to sit on these corners and stop them. I, too, have children, I don't let my children walk to the bowling alley, because it's crazy. But I did speak with engineering today, and we feel as though one of the things that we can do to address it being a little bit more safe, is to start, possibly implement sidewalks, because if you notice, some of those areas do not have sidewalks at all, and the people have to walk, walk in the street, it's just really bad. We definitely will do another traffic study on Keep Street, we had done one before, but we're going to do another traffic study there. Speed humps, it's just something that, we would have them all over the city, and they are definitely a problem when, when it comes time to plowing the snow, it tears up plow trucks. So reach out to me, we'll talk, even about the one-way, I mean, the no-left sign that came down, that was not really technically legal, but we'll talk, so please reach out and give me a call.
Ma'am, if you could see Councilwoman Orman after the meeting, she'll meet with you. Okay, yes, but we don't shout out. Councilman Rivas?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. In my few minutes, I spoke about gratitude, and believe me when I said that I'd be remiss if I don't continue to say thank you to the Linden employees of the city. You are the ones making the city keep moving forward every day, so my gratitude to all of you, as well as to all the services that the City of Linden offers, our fire department, our police officers, our health department, everyone that makes this city move forward, thank you. That's a part of gratitude that I'm talking about, without you, this city cannot be moving forward. I also want to remind all of you that this is democracy, coming here to the microphone to share, share your need, to share your opinions. This is democracy, and we have to make sure that we do it respectfully, we do it as you have, as you have done it, making sure that we can understand what your needs are, because this council, ladies and gentlemen, you may not know it, but this is a united, this is a united council. We're united, and we have everybody's back. So thank you, everybody, I hope everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Moni, Councilman Cole?
Yes, I just want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day weekend, be safe. People, please, slow down, I agree, there is a lot of speed in Linden, I live on East Curtis Street, a block away from School One, and they fly down the street, and I think of things that I would like to put out there to slow them down, but I can't, because I don't want to go see the police department. So I'm not on the traffic committee, but once you do a traffic study like Councilwoman Orman, hopefully, the PAL, where the PAL is, it took me, what, my second term to get a four-way stop, because you have to have three consecutive accidents, and, what, is it five? It's five consecutive accidents in 12 rolling months, for you to even get a four-way stop sign.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, Councilman Delgado?
I'm going to speed through this, because I have a minute. We've been dealing with the commercial truck issue throughout all the residential roads in the sixth ward, it's a problem, we got in contact with the Department of Transportation, the city gave permission, and did all the background work, they're going to come out and study the 109, to see if they could alleviate that issue. Lots of rain, lots of growth, thank you to DPW, thank you to all our employees, to getting it done today, especially to county, our county employees for Wheeler Park. Kennedy, lots of double parking issues, our police have been doing a great job clearing that out, but people, please, no double parking. Speeding, that's part of my report, too, speeding's an issue, I've walked my word a lot, I've been almost hit, we're working very hard to deal with that as well. And last but finally not least, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I know that there's not a family in this community that does not deal with mental health, but the difference is, is that when someone has a physical illness, there is no stigma. But when you have schizophrenia, when you have bipolar disorder, when you have anxiety, depression, there's a lot of stigma, so let's be cognizant, let's not make fun of people that are in the streets, because a lot of them are suffering from mental illness, and that concludes my comment.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay. Just one comment on our festivals, and we are making a concerted effort to move them to where we had the 100th anniversary celebration, to not close Wood Avenue. We've heard from many of the businesses, Mr. Cabeza has been walking up and down Wood Avenue, and that was one of the complaints from the businesses about having to close, so we're making a concerted effort to put most of our events behind the CVS and in the promenade, so please stay tuned, we'll see how that works, you know, it's a work in progress. Okay, the next council meetings will be as follows, council conference meeting Monday, June 16, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the council conference room, City Hall. Council conference meeting prior to the council meeting Tuesday, June 17, at 6:00 p.m. in the council conference room, City Hall. Council meeting Tuesday, June 17, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers, City Hall. These meetings will be held in person. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakakis?
Yes.